We're gonna start. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the special board meeting of Dundee Township. On July 31st, 2025, I call this meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Here.
Trustee Drake?
Here.
Trustee Fixmer?
Here.
Trustee Harvey?
Here.
Supervisor Shaw?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance, I ask you to please write, "Rise with me."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is approval of agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve the agenda.
Can I get a second, please? Any discussion? We have the approval of agenda. Mr. Kimzie, would you like to clarify? Oh, roll call, sorry.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harvey?
Here.
Supervisor Shaw?
Here.
I'll do it. Yes. You say yes.
Yes.
Not here. Under, I'll do it in a presentation.
Alright, fine. Okay, reports?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is reports. I'll start with the supervisor's report. So we had a special meeting, a board meeting, on June 26th to amend policies, and I was not told anything until it was time to vote. Discussions were held without my knowledge. Unfortunately, I voted yes and learned after the meeting that I was kept out of it because my powers were taken away. Trustee Harvey has been a supervisor and a board and a board trustee for decades. She knows better. I would like to know why the trustees did that. Anyone? So no reason?
You're the ones who voted on it without reading it, though. We didn't vote on it. You voted on it and did not read it first, correct?
The question is, why was that done?
What was, you were here. You voted on something that you did not read. That's more problematic.
We all did that.
I read it.
On the first night, when we were told we received certain documents. We said we did not read things, but then we voted yes. So I think that we have to be a little careful.
No, and we were thoroughly chastised for that.
Yeah, and we were, yes. So you would think by then she would have fought.
The numbers were changed because the trust isn't there yet. You're a brand-new supervisor, and we saw fit to change the numbers. And we have all asked what bills cannot be paid.
You will not give us the information.
We have not received the information.
You gave us 48 hours' notice for this meeting. I emailed Maria twice, asking her specifically a list. We were told not to, what was the email we received this afternoon? Not to bar?
Were you finished?
No, no, I wasn't.
I was asking, Trustee Day.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
So, we asked for those numbers, and you will not give us those numbers. Your communication with the trustees is nonexistent. Did you notify us personally that we were having this meeting?
Did Maria?
You emailed us. We're not employees.
And we're not your secretaries, correct?
So you're expecting us to check our emails hourly?
Why wasn't that considered before the policies were made?
The emails?
Then how would the policies be enacted?
Looking through other townships, the spending limits are, ours are actually a little more generous than other townships.
Actually, in this township, we've never had a supervisor that did not have these powers. And Trustee Harvey herself was new at one point, so was Erin, and so was Ms. Gleese.
But the $30,000 was just added in Erin's
Term.
Third year?
Third year.
Fourth year?
I think it was increased from 20 to 30 because the law changed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So was there to accommodate the law? That's still, the trust part, I mean...
Have you returned the money to the township for your party?
Didn't you vote for that?
No, I know, but we were just asking, because you wrote yourself a check.
And it's not out there that it has been returned?
It has been. It was returned, actually, I was told, I told Tom the same night, and it was done the next period. So I will now explain how it has, the policies have impacted the township so far. At this time, I have to have cemetery board meetings, then township board meetings, and for that I have to either comp employees or pay overtime, even the attorney gets paid more. Keep in mind, the cemetery is understaffed, and we are running low on lots. Our staff works extremely hard to serve our residents. Today, we have to meet to approve a $7,014 much-needed order, and along with an excavator, a mini-excavator. So I ask again, are these powers that you took away reasonable? Okay, that is all I have to say. Benji, do you want to go next?
I think it would be the trustee report, wouldn't it?
Sure. I think they are reasonable. Oh, go ahead. Do you want to go first?
Yeah, it would be the trustee report.
And I wrote something down so that I don't forget important points. And this is a reflection of my opinion, and my opinion only. We should not have changed the spending policy. It was punitive action in response to assumptions we made about Supervisor Shaw. These assumptions were based on events two decades ago and on interpersonal conflict that began in the early weeks of the campaign. Everyone except Clerk Clark contributed to the situation, myself included. For that, I am ashamed and publicly apologize on my behalf, my behalf only. Supervisor Shaw is not perfect and has experienced a rough transition to her position and has made her own mistakes, but we did little to make it easier. In fact, we have made mistakes as well. It is my opinion that we made a profound mistake in limiting the supervisor's ability to pay bills over $7,000 without the board's approval. This has negatively impacted the township by causing late fees, and I did look, and I did get answers, and leading to time spent trying to resolve these issues. Previous supervisors have not had such restrictions aside from the law change from 20 to 30. Supervisors Thor, Gleese, and Harvey did not endure the blatant obstructionism that we have subjected Supervisor Shaw to. Some may argue that the $900 expense for the supervisor's installation costs were irresponsible. I have since learned that she was, had intended to pay out of pocket but was told she could reimburse herself. Make of that what you will. Yes, Supervisor Shaw has made mistakes, while other supervisors have as well. In fact, some of these missteps were far more egregious than expensing overpriced orders. Some were so egregious that I'm amazed that Supervisor Shaw would be penalized compared to what certain other people did. We made decisions based on personal grievances and said they were in the best interest of the township. Again, this is my opinion. This outcome clearly says different for my part, and I am embarrassed and ashamed. Finally, I feel the need to clear, be clear that this policy change was never discussed with more than two trustees at a time, not in a quorum. And as far as I know, Supervisor Shaw did not get a chance to hear about this because we spoke on the phone to each other, one at a, only two at a time, and she did not get a chance to see it before the meeting. Once again, this is my perspective, no one else's, after I asked many questions from several people, and I want to make clear that nobody has told me what to do because that isn't, that is something that has been going around the community, that we are following the directions of certain individuals. Going forward, I will do better. I will look at facts, not conjecture or feelings, and... So it goes, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Henry, or Trustee Fixmer. And you are all welcome to come and attest to bills. I've said this before. Madam Clerk comes every time we do do that. So you're welcome to do that. You're also welcome to perform interviews with us.
I'd like to do my input as well.
Okay, sure.
I'd like to respond. First of all, that is your opinion, Henry, and I do not share most of that. In fact, much of it at all. Supervisor Shaw, I don't see what, the limiting your ability to contract for goods and services, how that impacts the cemetery overtime, because there's a specific exception for paying bills that allows salaries, insurance payments, bonds. There are 10 things there that specifically say that if those bills, when those bills come in, they can be paid immediately. So I don't see that the cemetery overtime has anything to do with this at all because salaries are among those exemptions. I have also checked with a few other townships. Actually, just one, Kempton Township, and their limit is $5,000 on their supervisor. District 300, their superintendent is limited by $10,000, and they seem to...
No, no, not true.
You are out of order.
$35,000.
Oh, then you told me that, and that was mistaken, I guess?
Yes, more mistaken. It's $35,000.
No, you told me that.
I did not tell you that.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. That's enough of this. This is out of order. So I was misinformed by Ms. Zeller that the superintendent could be, was, had a $10,000 limit. I rest, I still say that the $5,000 limit for Mr. Cooper works really well. Limits on the earlier supervisors, they were never even approached. And the big difference there is there was trust between the supervisors and trustees, which does not exist with this board. So there was a feeling on the part of board members that we had to act quickly. We were concerned that contracts would be let, that we would have no control over, and that is the reason for the hurry and the reason for quickly doing it. I was unaware that Supervisor Shaw was not informed of this at the same time that the trustees were, but we did, as Henry alluded to, meet with the attorney two at each time so we were not in violation of the Open Meetings Act. And I assumed that Supervisor Shaw was included in that, and if she was not, then apologies in order, and I'm happy to offer it. Again, the bills can be paid, and I did check with this today. The bill-paying routine is the one that's been used by this township and by other supervisors and other townships. The bills come in, they are marked with the appropriate line item, budget items, so they know, you know which department they come out of. They then go into essentially two piles, if you will. One pile is among those 10 exemptions. There's wages, there's salaries, there's insurance payments. There are bills in there that would incur penalties if they were delayed. Those are paid immediately, and that's just an ongoing thing that the board has voted on and allowed. The other bills are to be audited and held until the trustees have a chance to look at them. And that is the one thing that we felt we should re, we should reinforce our authority over. The $30,000 limit is a contractual limit. In other words, I am not comfortable having the supervisor be able to contract for anything up to $30,000 with neither the knowledge or the permission of the board. I think that is not a good use of taxpayer dollars. And I think $7,000 is a more reasonable amount. Things that are of that amount should be brought before the board, and the board should have input on it because we also answer for what happens in this township.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm curious, how did we come to the total of $7,000 as opposed to the 20 that, or even 10? And by the way, Kempton, how big is that township?
It's a township.
But I mean, like, how many people?
No, how's their budget? That's the question.
How big is their budget?
I don't know. But it's a prosperous township with an open space district. They've passed, I think, three referendums now. They own close to, their goal is 2,000 acres. They have a staff that's comparable to ours. They have a cemetery. So it's a comparable operation.
We're really...
$70,000? Because 7,000 is enough.
10,885 people in 2020 consensus.
17,465.
Seventeen.
And we have how many people?
Sixty-five.
Thirty?
And the number of people is irrelevant here. It's the size of the budget. That's the relevant issue.
Yeah, they have more in tax.
And the size of the operation. Again, it's a comparable township.
Is that all for the trustee's report? Okay. Mr. Kimzie?
Catch me off guard. So briefly, I think I was gonna make a brief report under the last agenda item and didn't have the opportunity to, but I know that several of the trustees have asked the approval of the agenda beyond each agenda. And I just want to note, I don't think that's an appropriate agenda item for a reason because the law prohibits it, right? So the Open Meeting Act requires 48 hours' advance notice of the agenda, the agenda items. So the agenda, you know, approval is kind of superfluous. Things can't be changed or added specifically. And the township did receive a public access counselor complaint last, during the last, since the last meeting for, one of the members of the board had added an agenda item that was not on the agenda, and so we're currently dealing with that now. That said, the board can, at any time, by a majority vote, amend the agenda to move items around on the agenda. And I think, you know, so that's just my comment on the approval of the agenda item. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Alright, so the next item on the agenda is public comment. Each speaker today gets five minutes.
Are you allowing cemetery?
Oh, sorry. My, forgive me. Please, Benji. And Mr. Barnard.
Hey, everybody. I'm Jim, this is again, it's Cemetery. So I just wanted to come talk to you about the mini-excavator and the bins. Also, we are down one more person at Cemetery. So we're down to two. We had multiple advocates coming. We called a few areas. And we do have a few people that are qualified to start that full-time position. They have experience in landscaping, similar equipment usage. So, yeah, right, that is really good. We have a mini-excavator on front of us currently. So CAT dropped one off for us, and they allowed it to demo it, train on it. And that is the hope that you guys have in front of you for $72,000. We need that mini-excavator because in the new sections, it's very, very compact. With the backhoe loader that we have now, it's just too big. If any of you guys were to have a stone out there, I would hate for that big one to move accidentally and hit something. With this mini-excavator we have, it would eliminate the chances of that happening actually. Just because of how small and compact it is and the way it's able to move at a 360 rotation. So it's just more efficient for us as well. Takes us about two and a half hours to get one out. That would probably be the time to dig one more. And then, as well, we do need those original head bins that are over $7,000 purchased. The staple on that is pretty much done. So we just need to go in and put those rolling heads in, and then we're able to start selling to the next section. So we just need to, you know, okay, try it.
So with your rented CAT that you're testing, have you tried it? Like, do you guys like it a lot?
I do like it. Actually, it's a, it's a lot simpler for me because in the backhoe, you have to turn it on to use two different controls. And this one, you just, you just say...
Just like a steel?
Yeah. You can either use the foot pedals or the joysticks as well. So it's really up to preference. Two of us right now are being trained on using it, going to two on front. Whenever that full-timer came in, we want to train them as soon as possible just so we can have three knowledge excavators under development. If I have to take care of two more, and we have an emergency hole, hey, can the people do that for me? There's no issue here.
Well, thank you for working extra. I apologize that you guys lost somebody. Thank you for all you do.
Of course, yeah. It's like, we gotta take care of, we gotta take care of the people. It's my job. I love it. I don't mind it.
I'd like to introduce myself, because someone you do and do naturally. My name is Leo Barnard. I am the Cemetery Board. So we are the board that approved the budget that this board approved last year for managing the two cemeteries, all its operations, and improvements. As Benji had stated, the supervisor had asked for this board to also approve of these requests. These requests were already in the Cemetery Board budget. They've already been approved by the Cemetery Board. If there's any questions regarding the approval, please ask me. I am the youngest person on the Cemetery Board. I've been on the board six years now. And I'm still learning from the other two board members who have been on many things. One of the things that we have learned going into these first couple of months of our new elected process is some of the processes that were being handled by the Cemetery Director were sort of kept under wraps from the board itself. So with the new Cemetery administration, we're gonna work on bettering those processes and procedures. One of the things we learned in the last several weeks is there is equipment that is over 15 years old. Now, I personally have a snowboard over 35 years old. But I don't use it, you know, 250 days a year either. So we do have equipment that a lot of expense dollars have been put to it to keep it repaired, to keep it functioning. So we're gonna look at correcting some policies so that there is end of, I hate to say end of life, being on a Cemetery Board. For equipment, there isn't end of life. We need to make sure that we start rotating that equipment out before we're putting the expense dollars to it. So, when I took the oath with this board, I believe it's pretty much the same oath that all of you took. We are responsible for all monies, and as such, we do answer back to the community also. So, again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Benji.
Appreciate you so much.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Each speaker gets five minutes.
Ken Schaefer?
So, I just wanted to mention, thank you for getting back to me on some of the questions I've had regarding previous meetings. And I just wanted to bring up a second item that, just so it doesn't get lost in the woodwork, is that grant from the state of Illinois, I don't know what the status of this payment. We thought we were approaching close at the end of the term, but it should be about $500,000 that comes back. I'm sure Ms. Dundee would like to gather the payment. And then, also, part of that comes back to the cemetery, and I'm gonna put a pitch in for fencing over the West Dundee site because I know people are very anxious with the new springfield development going in. That would be beneficial for the community. And that's all I have.
So, Mr. Schaefer, I can answer you on that. So it is a $500,000 grant. There was a report that was supposed to be filed on April 30th that wasn't filed. So our SAM certification expired on May 8th. But the result, when I came in and I learned about it, I paid approximately $1,100 and change and renewed it for three more years. But federal filing takes about three, at least three weeks to get that in order. So once that happened, we started working with our new caseworker that was assigned to us, and we are working on that right now. We've submitted one form. We have one more form to do. It's been very hard to find all of the documents in one place. So, and then we found out about the loan from East Dundee as well that we owe back. So we collected all of that. We're pretty much ready to, in a day or two, we should be able to send that back. Hopefully, it doesn't get returned, but you can call us anytime, and I can give you an update on that.
And I know we were expecting payment two years ago, but it's a ongoing process. So, as long as you keep on happening.
Sure, no worries.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Cheryl Anderly?
Hi. I'm Cheryl Anderly. I live in West Dundee, and I hate public speaking. But I've pretty much been a lifelong resident of Dundee Township. Yes, and I worked here part-time as a caseworker. So I feel uniquely qualified to comment on this. Last month, I attended the board meeting, and Trustee Harvey said something that I just can't stay silent about. There was an agenda item regarding general assistance. Trustee Harvey spoke of the anticipated wave of need that will be coming due to the issues coming out of Washington, DC. Trustee Harvey told the supervisor that she should not mess with general assistance right now so the township would be ready to meet the need when it arrives. I was in full agreement with her, up to that point, but then she lost me. Rather than address how the township would meet that need, she pivoted to suggesting the township hire a full-time person for open space for $65,000 per year, plus the cost of benefits, to do procurement, coordinate volunteers, and apply for grants. Now, everybody loves open space, but it's land. It's not going anywhere. It is obviously a very robust volunteer group, and they can certainly coordinate themselves. There's an app called Trello. We use it at the Village for the French market. So I find it implausible that the current open space employees place their own supply orders or in a minimum make a list for the supervisor to order. It's my understanding there's a volunteer that has been applying for grants, and that person can continue to do so. I wanted to congratulate all of you on your impressive victories. I understand how difficult it can be to be a newly-elected trustee trying to learn your role. It's normal to rely on somebody with experience to help guide you. As you've certainly learned by now, the township exists for three reasons. They are assess property values, maintain roads, and take care of the contingent. Bottom line, this suggestion is nothing more than a reverse Robin Hood. It's taking from the poor to give to the well-off kind of landowners that have the adjacent properties to open space, many of whom are the most active and vocal volunteers. Please don't go down this path. People are going to need you. Follow your democratic values that we collected you for. Thank you.
I'm sorry, anyone else have a chance to speak for public comment?
Okay. So I'll close this portion of the meeting. The next item on the agenda is new business. So that is RMRF. The, is there a motion to appoint the supervisor at the township as authorized agent for RMRF?
Summed.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is made by Trustee Harvey and seconded by Trustee Day?
Nope.
Or Trustee Drake? Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. And the motion carries, and the RMRF appointment for authorized agent has been approved. The next item on the agenda is cemetery board recommendations. We've already heard from Benji, but if we have any questions, we can further ask them at this time. Okay, so we will consider the excavator bid, which is actually a source well bid, and we can ask Mr. Kimzie to elaborate on that if needed. Similarly, the board previously authorized the vacant full and part-time positions. So no action is required on those positions at this time either. We are currently interviewing candidates to fill these positions. Given that I no longer have the authority to hire employees under the current board operations policy, I anticipate calling another special meeting next week to take action on hiring the new employees to fill the position. Is there a discussion?
We are two weeks away from the next meeting. We're, every time we call a special meeting, we're paying for it.
I mean, so it should be not higher?
It should have been maybe thrown on tonight's agenda.
But we don't have the finals?
I just, we're already getting feedback that we shouldn't be calling so many special meetings, and I'd like to not spend taxpayer money. Just my two cents.
So what were the...
So what were the, since I was not given the information I requested, so what are the actual costs that we've occurred?
That's the next part.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry. We'll go to that.
So my suggestion is that we, that you switch John over because he's an experienced cemetery employee and make him the third person for the next two weeks and we take care of this.
We can't talk about it, about that. It's not the agenda. And it's a special meeting, so we can't discuss things that are, I'm sorry, we can't.
Oh.
It's, because it's special.
Okay, I see.
We can't discuss. Usually we couldn't vote on it if it's not on the agenda because it's not on the agenda, we can't discuss.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Barnard?
As I am a member of the cemetery board, my question would be, does this board truly need to approve the position? Or does this board need to approve the funding to make sure that the current funding in the cemetery budget will hold up the position and we be accepting of an applicant to the cemetery board?
So I'll speak on that again. I want to be careful to not go beyond the scope of what's on the agenda. And I think you gave the recommendation and, which is fine. I think it's related to the recommendation. I'm happy to answer the question more specifically after the meeting if you want to talk. But the short answer is, there was not entirely clear. There's been at least one court case, a district court case that says a township supervisor has hiring and firing authority. But pretty much every reported appellate court case says that that lies with the board. And so, so I understand your question.
Yeah, well, you said, say the board.
Yep.
In our case, we've got two boards that sit between.
Sure, no, the town, the town board.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, I will move to the next item on the agenda. Consideration for excavator bid. Is there a motion to approve the purchase of the new Caterpillar Model 30107A Mini Hydraulic Escavator with all standard equipment in addition to the specifications as presented in the Alterfer Cat Quote 12982901?
A motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made by Trustee Day and seconded by Trustee Fixmer. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Let me just briefly to discuss for the benefit of the public that, so typically anything that costs over $30,000 the township's required to put out for bid, for 14 days to advertise for bids. And I'll speak up, sorry, to advertise for bids for 14 days and to publish in the newspaper and get bids. This, there's a number of smattering of exceptions because, you know, where the exceptions over swallow the rule. But in this case, this is what they call a source well bid. So there's exceptions for purchasing cooperatives where local governments come together and they pool their resources. And there's quotes that are put up, competitively bid quotes that are put up for government entities to go where they, it's almost kind of like an eBay where they can get them and take that quote that's been competitively bid before. So it qualifies for the statute. So there was not a competitive bid, you know, we would all traditionally think in this case. But it does comply with the Government Purchasing Cooperative Act. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion carries and the purchase is hereby approved as presented. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Sorry.
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes.
Should I say motion carries again?
Yes.
Motion carries and the purchase is hereby approved as presented. Congratulations, cemetery.
We're not done.
Uh, Burnston, yeah. Well, I'm predicting the future. Approval of the Burnston Order. That's the next item on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the change order? It says change order. It's not an order that was changed. It's, it says that only because we changed one item. So it was more than anything, the company wanted us to know that, to differentiate because the dollar amount was the same. But we needed something to identify between the first order and the second one. We just had the pin size changed on that. Therefore, it's called change order. So is there a motion to approve the change order for corrected cemetery marker components, including the revised dome caps marked with block and lot numbers as specified in Burnston Sales Order Number 0715975?
A motion.
I'll second, sorry.
Okay. So the motion has been made by Trustee Day and seconded by Trustee Harney. Is there a discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes.
Congratulations. The motion carries and the vehicle purch, and the order purchase for the cemetery, the Burnston order purchase has been approved as presented. Excuse me. The next item on the agenda is approval of the reversal of amended amendments to policy regarding purchasing of goods and services. Is there a motion to approve the reversal of amendments to policy regarding purchasing of goods and services as presented?
A motion.
Is there a second? Okay, so the motion is made by Trustee Fixmer, but is not seconded on the motion.
That, well, you can second the motion, but I don't know that that's what you want to do. Where it dies for one of a second.
The what?
So you need a second to proceed. You have the ability to make.
But it still dies.
No, not if you second it, then it goes to a vote. I'm just not sure that that's, it's up to you.
All right. So the motion is made by Trustee Fixmer and seconded by Supervisor Shaw. Is there a discussion?
Well, yeah. Sue, do you want to start?
I'm not quite sure which part of this. So we got quite a large packet here. And I have a number of things that I'd like to see changed. I'm not sure how to proceed with this.
Well, here's what I'll, here's what I'll say again.
Okay.
The specific agenda item, because it's a special meeting, we have to be specific.
Right.
So we can't discuss about what we want or what may be, right? We, the specific question before the board is, shall we take from, go from what the policies are now to what they changed to on the 26th of last month to what they previously were? That's the specific question.
Okay. All right, then I have no, then I have no discussion.
I want to make a point. I don't know. There was an added page at the end that would.
That can't be discussed. Because that was, that was something that I just wrote. It's not from the back of.
This came earlier today.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Mr. Kim, you can take a look to see if that would be included.
So is this, did you send this? So this is, this looks like a version of the policy.
It looks, because my understanding was it was added to kind of put a stopgap on.
So this is the policy.
The new policy?
This is the new, this is the policy, and without going through it line by line, that I believe was implemented on the 26th. Because I believe there was 11, 11 items previously. 11. And now I believe there is 10. And I think, well, actually, I'll answer you.
It's true.
I'll get my monies, you get your money's worth. I'll look. So here it is. And it looks, there was 11. And this does appear, based on the old-fashioned way to check this, to be the policy that was implemented on the 26th.
My feeling on it was that this list was, which for the audience is for pre-approval of township expenditures was a list of what, let's see, the township supervisor carrying out the obligations. Township treasurer is authorized to issue payment prior to examination and audit by the township board for following payables. And there's a list that was mentioned earlier that I feel that when we do our job to audit, we will be checking in. We will be seeing if there was a feecence of any sort. And I feel, to me, I'm comfortable using that as kind of a safety net, if you will, if we were to restore the spending limits. And I would also like to suggest that if it would help, I'm not getting the vibe that it will, but if it would help, we could say $20,000 instead of $30,000. But I do feel that it's.
But that's not on the agenda, so we can't.
I was going to say, I was going to let it go a little bit, but not. Yeah, so it's only, just the reversal. Yeah, just because it's a special meeting, trustee. And what I'll, I just, I'll comment briefly. I think there's much ado about these pre-approval policies amongst lots of townships. And really, I think it's kind of a, a red herring. So in every other type of local government, this is not a necessary policy, right? The treasurer, who is the supervisor in this case, is authorized to pay bills because there are already contracts signed or approved by the board, right? So back in the 1800s, there was three, so the three functions of the township, there was the three officials. The supervisor, the assessor, and the highway commissioner. And because it's Illinois, right, there was at some point, they thought it a wise decision to say, hey, we, maybe we put in a board of auditors, right, to check and make sure these folks are doing things properly. So the idea is that the trustees themselves have no power to approve or disapprove a payment, right? They audit, right, and say that they're, they're approving the audit. So they can't say, oh, that payment, right, you can't make that payment. If I was someone on the other end, right, and I am in certain circumstances, right, where I send my bills and, you know, I'm authorized or led to believe that I perform work on behalf of the township. The township owes me that money regardless of whether the trustees approve it or not after the fact. It's this concept of inherent, inherent, or not inherent authority, but apparent authority, right, where the folks are led to believe that the authority exists. So there's a difference between this bill-paying ordinance or policy in this case and then the actual spending authority. So I think spending authority and the ability to make expenditures and contracts in the first place is an issue. But the bill-paying, I think there's lots of, lots of, you know, ado about really kind of nothing. And it's, it can only cause problems, in my opinion. And that's why we, the way we draft the policy is very, very broad to essentially give the supervisor the same power as any other CEO of a municipal organization. But I'll stop.
So is there any possibility of making this back to 30, but change the, the one power that she has to make contracts and stuff like that?
Well, so I think what we could do is, I mean, you can, right now, we can say, we want to pull back part of the policy, right? It was not a total reversal. I think we put both of the policies on there. So the purchasing policy is one thing. And that, and you specifically took away the power to hire and fire. And you specifically lowered the purchasing authority amount and then added some additional requirements for obtaining quotes, I think. So those are things that could be reversed. And separately.
But we can't change a few things without changing it all?
You can't change things that weren't, not changed already.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying? We're just reversing, you can reverse some things. And what I'm saying is for this purchasing, or for the, the second piece is this policy on pre-approval of bills, right? And approval is really a misnomer again because the board doesn't have the power to approve or disapprove. So I think my recommendation would be that that policy be reversed. Because I think it's, I think it's, it just provides flexibility that keeps the township out of trouble. And what about, you know, the purchasing, on the front end, the policy on employment decisions, purchasing and stuff, that's a, that's a policy decision for the board. So I think just, does it, does it make sense what I'm saying?
No.
So there's two policies.
I know there's two policies.
And so the second policy is, what if the township makes an expenditure? What, it's an invoice or a contract. So if I do work for the township and I send the township a bill, the township's approved me as the attorney, approved me to perform work, right? It has, so I perform that work, right? And the board's job is to audit that bill. It's not to approve the bill, right? It's, so there's, you can't say, you can't pay that bill. There's been lots of litigation about that. The only grounds that you can say is, well, that's a fraudulent service, right? It's not just, we don't like what the supervisor did. So it's, was it a proper invoice? Was the service provided? Was it provided, you know, in accordance with the contract, right? It's those sorts of decisions, not a policy decision about do we like it? So it's not an approval, it's an audit, is what I'm saying. And I think that function in every other unit of local government, in every other, you know, state in the country has, you know, a policy, is, has the powers kind of outlined in this pre-approval policy. And I think it's, you know, for good reason. And just because the Illinois legislature hasn't, you know, saw fit to bring townships in Illinois into the 21st century, doesn't mean the township should.
But that's not never the question. The question is, will the employee or will the?
Well, I think it is one of the questions, trustee, is there's two policies.
I, I understand that. There's, I, there's, there are two issues here and I do understand that. But why in the world do we even bother to approve the bills? If we give the supervisor authority to essentially pay any bill that's under her discretion? And, okay, we look at them afterwards and, but why bother?
And if there's fraud, right, that's, your job is to audit the, because you're like an auditor. Just like the auditor at the, it's like, that's like saying that we wouldn't, we shouldn't be able to pay until, you know, the auditing firm finishes its audit, right? The, the function of an audit isn't, isn't to, to make sure prior to payment, right? I mean, the function of an audit is to make sure that everything was paid properly to know if we have to investigate misconduct.
And we have no way of knowing that.
Well, that's your job to know, right? I mean, to audit the bills.
Right, it's our job to know it. That's the point.
That's why we get the budget each year.
Right, to come in, you look at the budget, right, you look at the list of bills, you can look at each of the bills, you can get the invoices and say, there was an invoice, right, can I see? So I'll use my bill, for example, right? If you wanted to come in and say, hey, I think the attorney's padding the bill, right? You can come in and you can review my bill, you can go line by line and you can look at the contract and you can look at the budget where it comes from and that's what an audit is, right? And that's what the force function is with respect to the audit. Now, purchasing authority is separate and that's a policy decision. I'm talking about on the backend in terms of auditing.
So am I understanding from what I said, the motion on the floor here is a reversal of the amendments to policies due, the policies that we passed, when was it, two weeks ago? And it's, we can go and separate those two things, the bill-paying and the contractual authority?
Correct, because they're both separately listed.
So if we approve today, can we go back and change those things at a later date?
You could change them at any time, at a meeting.
Can I ask a few questions of Shefali, related?
I'll, I'll decide if I'm going to, I guess, of course.
I would have loved to have asked these questions ahead of time. I did email. I didn't hear back. I wonder how many bills are under the $30,000 or not, over the $30,000 that you are, or over the $7,000 that you are having issues with? How many of those have accrued fees since we put that policy in place? And why does it need to be changed?
So like for today, for example, so why does it need to be changed is what I'm going to answer first. For example, for today, the purchasing that we needed, that was a dire need, that is why we're here, right? It's over $7,000.
What was a dire need?
The pins? He reported on them.
But we were able to vote on it.
I know, but that before, this meeting wouldn't have been called for that. So there's that one. The second thing, I've always said, you can come on in and look at the bills yourself, right? So because of the change of policy, the supervisor and the supervisor's office cannot be burdened with extra work of looking into, we here, we are here to serve the residents, not the trustees, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we shouldn't have to go through, how many bills do we have? Let's mark them down. Let's put two hours away from our time. And let's try to see how much we can get done in the two hours. And then we can try and report back to them and then we'll consult back again. You know what I mean? You are welcome to come here, right? That's what I ask.
But you're only open when I work, which isn't your problem, but that's the case. How many late fees have we accrued since putting this policy in place?
Oh, we, we are not taking that on to check, okay? So we give you the bills, when they come in, if the amount is over the limit, Madam Clerk and I place it away, okay? That's what we do. That's not a, a part of our job.
So I think, and I think, I think you could direct that to the accountant, right? And that's a thing, you know. No, no, I'm saying, but outside of the meeting, right? I mean, like you can ask the supervisor or you could reach out to the accountant and have, I think probably would make sense. What I'll say, I know other trustees who work in other townships, right? They'll just make appointments and some of them have. make appointments and some of them have recurring appointments, right, where they come in outside of hours and sometimes it's, you know, they'll have, the accountant will be there and I know sometimes the accountants like hit, you know, different circuits, right?
Is it a part of the accountant's job though?
Yeah, well, you, I mean, you're, you all are the boss of the accountant, right? And maybe they'll charge more for it, but I mean, it's, it's, at some point, you know, either the trustee has to take off work or.
So again, the taxpayers are going to pay for the amendment of the policy.
Or I am by taking off work.
Right. Well, and I'm just giving options, right? I mean, that's all I'm, and, and.
Thank you, Mark.
Or you can, you know, I mean, I, there's Zoom now, I mean, I'd be sure there's a way to, to do that, but so that it doesn't, because the supervisor's right, it's not the supervisor's job to, to put all that together, it's why you pay the accountant.
Isn't it the supervisor's job to respond to our emails when we ask questions?
No.
It's not like personally, we emailed Maria four times?
No, and I, just like if the supervisor emailed you, you'd have no obligation to respond.
Hmm, okay.
And that's, it seems like, the process that we've used always in the past is that the bills that come in go into two piles. One is the one that you pay immediately because it, they meet one of the, the exceptions and the other one is addressed at the next meeting. There's never a late fee because the late fee ones are part of the exemptions. All of the others, salaries, all that kind of stuff, all that gets paid out the door regardless of the amount. It gets paid out the door and the others are paid at the next board meeting. I see no reason to change the policy.
So we do, when the accounting is here on site every other Monday, that's when madam clerk comes to attest and we don't look at all of those details, we're not going to, we don't have the time for it, so.
If the policy is changed, I hope that you take into consideration the taxpayers and what they are paying, as well as I hope that when you are hiring and firing, that you are taking into consideration the right people for the job.
So that is why we have adopted a, with, along with the cemetery managers and the assistant manager, we've adopted a policy within us that we will hire on the condition that we will do a one-month check-in and then a three-month actual check-in.
I like that.
Where, so we, we actually write down reports on how the performance is, what needs to be done. So at three months, we give the person enough time and then we decide to actually consider them, you know, permanent, yeah.
And so the interim thing is over even though we never voted on that?
We haven't hired anybody yet because we couldn't. So we have just been interviewing, so once we have a solid resume in hand, then we'll have to call a meeting. And whether that happens together or separate, it's a different story. You see what I mean? Full time and the seasonal.
I hope also with the changes that we vote on, um, that we remember that these special meetings cost money.
They do.
To our taxpayers and we're already getting frustrating comments, frustrated comments. And that's all from my two cents.
So the last thing I want to bring up, right, you do understand that the supervisor handles the budget of 1.6 million, but 30,000 is where we draw the line here? Do you see what I'm saying? Okay, so where were we? I'm completely lost. Roll call?
Well, yeah, so there's a, the question pending applies to the policies.
Oh, we haven't done anything, right?
Yeah, so you would get a, a roll call vote.
Okay, so madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
No.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
No.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. So the motion carries and the policy is reverted back to original policy. And it's approved as presented. Thank you trustees. Approval, which is the next item.
Executive session.
Okay, do we need an executive session?
Please no.
Oh, so, please no, do we need an executive session? Okay, all right, then adjournment. Can I hold everyone hostage now? I'm just kidding.
No, please don't.
I'm just kidding. Okay, is there any other business that any member of the board wishes to bring forward? No? So is there a motion to adjourn? They don't want to go. Okay, all right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion to adjourn is made by trustee Day and seconded by trustee Fixmer. Is there any discussion? Okay. Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, the ayes have it and we are adjourned at 7:56 PM.